I'd like to call to order the Monday, January 25th, Special City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Keane.
Present.
Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Phelan. Thank you. Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President Liang.
Present.
Eight members, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to ask everybody to just mute their Zooms if they could and just take a moment of silence in honor of all the women and men who are currently serving both here and abroad, as well as keeping in mind still all the frontline workers who are working during this pandemic. Thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, could you read the meeting law, please?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and that deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10, 2020 Order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, the Quincy City Council is holding this special city council meeting via remote video conferencing services, and is being aired on Quincy Access Television, QATV, Channel QATV 9 Government Access. So this evening, we are meeting to discuss and act upon the nomination and election of a qualified individual to serve as Ward 2 City Councilor for the remainder of the 2020 to 2021 term due to the January 19th, 2021 resignation of our dear friend and colleague, Counselor Brad Crowell. Counselor Crowell was an exemplary elected official, and I am inspired by how many folks have stepped up to continue his commitment of service to the residents of Ward 2. Upon Counselor Crowell's resignation, according to the Special Act, Chapter 321 of the Acts of 1953, the successor would be whichever of the defeated candidates in the last election received the highest number of votes. However, as Counselor Crowell ran unopposed in the last election, there is no defeated candidate as a runner-up. As such, according to the Act, as well as a memorandum from the city solicitor, we quote, "must vote on and select a candidate who was a registered voter from Ward 2. The selection is by simple majority votes of the remaining members of the council, which is the eight of us. Thus, five votes will be necessary," end quote, "and must be done within 15 days of the formal notice of the vacancy, which was provided by the clerk." This evening, we will hear from five qualified individuals who submitted their candidacy, after which nominations will be opened, followed by a second of any nomination made, followed by a roll call vote. If no one receives five votes after the roll call, we will continue to a second round of nominations and voting. Now, before we open up the floor, I want to take a moment to thank all of my colleagues, as well as Nicole Crispoe, and Jim Manning, and Jim Timmons for their hard work and collaboration over the last week and a half. They worked tirelessly together to make sure that we had a transparent and engaging process, as well as making sure that we're abiding by the rules that were set forth by these special acts. We had a really small window of time to work with to make sure that we fell within these 15 days, and I just wanted to pause to say that I really appreciate the work and efforts of every single one of you, and I could not have done it with you guys, so thank you for that. Next, I'd like to thank all of the five candidates who are joining us here this evening. Each and every single one of you are here because you're committed to doing what you can do to give back to your neighbors and also in service of the city. Your willingness to step up and to serve is commendable, and I want to thank you for stepping up to the plate. With that, we'll be inviting each of the candidates to speak for up to five minutes, and we're going to be going in alphabetical order. After each five of the candidates have spoken their five minutes, we'll go ahead and close that portion, and then open it up to call for nominations. So with that, we're going to go ahead and start with Anthony J. Andronico. Anthony?
Well, thank you, Nina, and good evening, Counsel President Liang, members of the city council, and thank you for the opportunity to join you here tonight to discuss my background and the opportunity to serve the remainder of Counselor Crowell's term. You know, first, I just wanted to express my thanks to Brad, who's admirably served the people of Ward 2 for the last decade. Brad was exactly what you'd want in a ward counselor. He genuinely listens to people's concerns, connected residents with city resources when they needed help, and did his best to represent their values when voting at City Hall. And although we have brighter days ahead in 2020, the next year will still have many challenges, and the person who assumes this role for the next year must be able to continue the high level of service that the people of Ward 2 have come to expect. Serving as vice chair of the school committee over the past year has been no easy task. We've conducted a superintendent search for the first time in 20 years, worked to reopen schools amidst COVID-19, and acted quickly to better respond to the issue of racial bias in our community. And with each of these major actions, I advocated for the one thing that I find most important when making decisions, and that's public input. Our superintendent search sought feedback from all QPS community stakeholders and produced a leadership profile report to identify what the public sought in a superintendent, and identified what the strengths and areas for improvement were for QPS moving forward. Our reopening plans were developed with significant survey feedback from parents, and our Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Subcommittee was established after we listened to the very personal stories of our students and recent alumni. And outside of my role in the school committee, I serve as the Communications Director for State Senator Patrick O'Connor. And it's a job that's really required me to quickly understand complex issues in legislation, such as the Brave Acts, or the latest public health guidance, and be able to effectively communicate their impact to constituents. But you know, the most important and critical part of that role has always been assisting residents and ensuring that they receive the services that they're entitled to from state agencies. And in particular, this past spring, when COVID-19 shut down the Commonwealth, I was on the phone quite literally all day and night with folks who would call our office to make sure that we connected them with the unemployment office and that they received the support that they needed. And oftentimes, whether we picked up the phone and returned voicemails was, in some cases, the deciding factor in whether or not people were going to be able to go grocery shopping and put food on the table for that week. And as you all know, as a city counselor, people reach out all the time to you, seeking your help to get the city services they're entitled to. Whether it's about filling a pothole and fixing a streetlight, or having questions about a potential citywide broadband network, it's the city council's responsibility to treat every issue with the same attentiveness, because the issue is important to them. And of course, people are more than just what's on their resumes. Some of the things I'm most proud of over the last few years are working behind the scenes at the State House, fighting against the Wayworth compressor Station, speaking out at public hearings against multiple state and federal decisions to allow the compressor station to move forward, working with the Point Webster PTO to deliver much-needed new student lockers, taking the time to read to Clifford Marshall Elementary School students, and celebrating the 100th anniversary of the Four River Clubhouse a few years ago with my neighbors. And in the years ahead, if chosen to serve the remainder of Counselor Crowell's term, I look forward to providing a high level of constituent services, prioritizing community input in the Faxon Park and Four River Clubhouse projects, ensuring that any city development maintains the integrity of our neighborhoods and directly benefits those who have already chosen to call Quincy home, and continuing the work ethic Counselor Crowell brought to his committee assignments, and in particular, as Chair of the Senior Citizens Committee, considering the large senior population in the ward. You know, what's most important to the people of Ward 2 is not whether my family has been here for 100 years, or if I can bring a fresh perspective to the city council. It's whether I'm prepared and qualified to step up on day one to deliver the services that our community has not only come to expect, but also rely on as we navigate the challenges of the upcoming year. And I know that myself and the other candidates are all united in wanting what is best for Ward 2. And in that regard, I know the city council has a very difficult vote before them, and I ask for your consideration. Thank you again for the opportunity, and I wish you the best of luck in your decision.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to go to Richard C. Ash. Richard? Richard, can you hear me?
I can, yes, thank you.
You're welcome. You have five minutes.
Good evening, Counsel President Liang and council members. First, I'd like to say this is the only time I've not been first in alphabetical order. So thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. As an attorney and lifelong resident of Ward 2, I know that I'm the best choice to fill this seat on the council. On one hand, it is very easy to articulate why that is, and on the other hand, it isn't, because in order to do so, I would have to explain my entire life in five minutes. I've spoken with most of you over the last week, and I know you have all received my letter of intent and resume over the weekend, so I do not want to waste a lot of time here today going over either of those documents line by line. A good city counselor, to me, especially in Quincy, is someone who has roots in the neighborhood, skill set for the position, and the passion and work ethic to make sure that each and every one of those constituents, each and every one of their constituents are given the time, attention, and voice that they deserve. My family moved to Quincy Point in the late 1800s, and we've stayed in the same area. My great-grandfather worked for the shipyard, and my grandfather at Boston Gear Works before starting at the Norfolk County Sheriff's Office in the early 1960s. Most of you also know, probably know, my grandmother, Chickie, who spent her entire adult life working the better Ward 2, St. Joe's, and Quincy Point. I was often taken along for the ride, and I would like to think I took some good notes. I practice civil litigation, primarily civil litigation and family law, meaning that I advocate for and help people through some of the hardest times and lowest points of their lives. It is a responsibility that I do not take lightly nor for granted. The practice of law requires a skill set that aligns with the city counselor, and therefore with each of you. We're talking about being responsive, listening, asking the right questions, following up, knowing who and where to connect with, and two, managing expectations, mediating, compromising, and the list goes on. Outside of work, I spend most of my time staying active in my ward and the city. I have been a board member on the Ward 2 Civic Association for a few years now. And last year, I was looking to get some more, some new blood involved, and I had some pretty big dreams for the Civic Association, but the pandemic proved me wrong. Still, I was happy we were able to fundraise for charities, host food drives, sponsor families for Christmas gifts, and I was especially proud of a virtual fundraiser that took off for a local family after their house burned down. Brad Crowell has done an incredible job with Ward 2 over the last nine years, and has embodied everything I have said thus far. That doesn't mean there isn't a lot of work to do, and right now in Ward 2, we're talking and thinking about the Faxon Park revitalization, the USS Salem, and the new shipbuilding museum, finishing the Four River Clubhouse renovations, and of course, opposing the Four River Compressor Station. Ward 2 is a diverse area and home to people of all races and backgrounds. There is still a large Arabic population by the shipyard. We also have South Cove Manor at Quincy Point Rehab, which is a long-term care facility for elderly Asian individuals. I have long prided myself on finding commonalities with any and everyone that I come across, and I've supported March Forward Quincy and Quincy for Transformative Change, as well as been the Vice President of Quincy Pride. I have also publicly supported Quincy Police and Fire Departments, along with our first responders, as I know and think that on a local level, these ideas are not mutually exclusive. Over the next 11 months, my number-one primary focus will be getting our great city back on track to pre-pandemic normalcy. We have done an excellent job at managing the spread of the virus, and now it is time to continue that work into a vaccination rollout plan. So the short answer is that I will be the best appointment for the Ward 2 City Councilor position, because again, I have the roots, the skill set, and the passion. The long answer is also that I have the roots, the skill set, and the passion. I thank each of you for the opportunity to listen to me tonight, and I look forward to your decision. Knowing that, no matter who you choose, I'm in great company. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we're going to go to Kenneth W. Augen Esquire. Kenneth?
Good evening, council members, and I just want to sound very humbled by this opportunity to be in the running with a group of civic and community-minded oriented candidates. I chose to make Quincy my home about 12 years ago, and I've been living in Ward 2 for about the past seven years. I've been practicing as an attorney in this area also for the past 12 years, and my practice involves quite a bit of dealings with the city. I've been involved in some issues involving imminent domain, code violations, zoning, et cetera. So I have kind of the background and skill set I think that would be very applicable to this position. I also am aware about some of the issues that we're facing residents of the ward, such as the trails in Faxon Park, the senior center at the Four River Clubhouse. And I'm aware of some improvements that really need to be addressed, especially concerning the intersections at Quincy Ave and Falls Boulevard, where there's been a light out for over a year, and happens to be in the area where I directly live, and also about the ongoing homelessness situation that's been especially escalating in the past year or two, probably more and more as a result of this pandemic. I do believe that, as a newcomer to this political scene, that I might bring a different perspective than some of the people who've been living in Quincy their entire lives. I grew up actually in South Florida, and somehow I ended up settling down in Quincy after I got married and I graduated college here in Boston. So I do think that my background dealing with a diverse group of people, especially I'm very strongly involved in immigration law, civil litigation, and family law, and amongst those three areas, I deal with people from all walks of life. Most of my clients happen to be from Quincy. A lot of them are newcomers to the city, and a lot of them have ongoing concerns as residents, as small business people, as people trying to establish roots in the city. And for those aforementioned reasons, I think that my background and my skill set would lend itself to a position here on the council. And I should also mention, my daughter is a student in the Quincy Public Schools. My wife is an RN, and she's also part of the vaccination drive. It looks like she'll be joining the, I guess, the broader outreach once it goes public to the non-elderly population. So I'm very proud that, you know, to call my wife on the forefront of the medical effort of the pandemic. And with that, I again, I thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Mary Jo Bragnan, MSN RN. Mary Jo?
Thank you, everyone. I think tonight's a very exciting night for Ward 2. I'm really impressed with the candidates that have put themselves out there to run for Ward 2 Counselor Crowell's seat. I agree with Anthony Andronico that Counselor Crowell was a fabulous ward counselor and has done a fantastic job in his years of service. I, however, am not seeking to run for the Ward 2 Council seat. As I stated in my letter of intent to all of you, I am interested and willing to serve for the remainder of this term of 2021. And what brought me to volunteer for this was what we've been experiencing in the past year. I, as a nurse and a healthcare executive, have been on the front lines of the pandemic, and I do believe that for the remainder of 2021, we will continue to be absorbed with the pandemic. I think our challenges with the pandemic in the city and the challenges for the council is to, how do we keep the children in school? How do we get more children back to school? How do we get services to the community? Mayor Koch, I think, stated it well in the Ledger today, talking about whether it be social issues, mental health issues, addiction issues. All of those things are dramatically impacted by this pandemic and are having to not be able to gather in large groups. The governor announced today that he'd be standing up, trying to stand up 165 vaccine sites. That's a monumental task of logistics, but that's only a small piece of it. Massachusetts has only received 86,000 doses of the vaccine weekly. To get us to our 80% with that amount coming in is going to take many, many weeks. And then there's the logistics of how do we reach our community? Quincy is now a diverse community. We are seeing across the country that folks are reluctant, about 30% overall, folks are reluctant to accept the vaccine, yet in our minority communities of our Black and Brown communities, that number is far greater, with only about 40% willing to accept the vaccine. This council needs to lead. This council needs to really think about that and think of their role, and how do we move forward and vaccinate? Because the key to moving forward is vaccinating and trying to reach 80%. That's truly why I decided to volunteer. I do not have an interest in running for the seat. I will not run for the seat. And again, I am very excited with the folks that have spoken already tonight, and I know Dana is following me, and I was impressed with her bio as well. Myself personally, I've lived in Ward 2 pretty much my entire life. I raised my family here. My mom is still alive, and she's one of the elders in the community. I think Ward 2 has a unique responsibility because of the number of elders in the community, and I just thought I had something to offer, given my healthcare background for the council at this point in time in 2021. Thank you for your time, and like I say, very exciting night for Ward 2, that there's such great candidates looking to seek this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Dana Alharken. Dana?
Hi, everybody, and good evening, council members. I first just want to say thank you for the opportunity to present and talk to the council, and I just, I feel very motivated just listening to everybody, because I think, if anything, the time to really get everybody engaged and feel like they want to be part of this growing city and part of this growing and changing city is now, so I'm very excited to be here and be participating in this. I've been a Quincy resident for over 13 years. 11 of those years have been in Ward 2. Just quickly, a little bit of my professional background. I've had over 10 years of nonprofit management. I worked in nonprofits in Chelsea, actually, working with high-risk young adults and helped navigate substance abuse and substance abuse resources for that population. And then I have close to 10 years in healthcare. I run patient advocacy, and I have for several small-to-mid-sized biotech companies. And my day-to-day role is really capturing a perspective of rare disease patients and bringing that perspective of what their gaps and the needs are within those communities to make sure the industry is not creating treatments kind of not aligned with what those communities need. That being said, I am part of the work that I'm the most proud of is really through my civic engagement of what I've had the privilege to be part of and lead within Quincy. About six years ago, I sat at a dining table with seven other neighborhood residents of Ward 2, and we were talking about how we really wanted to get involved and be engaged and grow our neighborhood. And we formed that day, essentially, we're like, let's make this a neighborhood association. And so I've had the privilege of kind of, from the ground up or from that dining room, making this neighborhood association called the Penton Neighborhood Association. I've been the president of that, and through that neighborhood association, we have, we've grown to, we have over 120 engaged residents. Through that leadership and activism, we're not only able to really carry out over 17 different neighborhood events, we also were able to create a committee that really focused on, about two and a half years ago, of how to access to the Quincy Adams MBTA. And that gate committee, that we call it the gate committee, through that, we had a tremendous amount of engagement with city officials. We worked closely with the mayor and his office, but we really focused on how do we get the voices of those residents and hear what their opinion was. And I think with that group, we were actually completely surprised at how much engagement there really was. In a very short period of time, we had over 400 completed surveys. We then took that data and did a full presentation to the mayor that demonstrated what the residents wanted. It was really about engaging the community and listening to what the residents of two different wards, what their opinions were. So that, I think, really stands out as one of the core components of why I feel like it would be a great asset to the council, is because it's about listening and learning. And I think with the city of Quincy, you know, I'm not a lifelong member here or a lifelong resident, and it's funny, sometimes people are like, oh, you're from the new Quincy. That part of the new Quincy is what Quincy is hoping for, right? That's why we've had this growth and this development. And it's a matter of how do you engage people that are coming into the city to try to figure out where they belong and who the public officials are, but it's also about listening to people that maybe they have been part of the city for many, many years, and their voice has never been heard, and they have never felt that their local officials represent them or their communities. And so I look forward to also engaging with those communities and those people and really listening to what I want from their local government, because I, one of the lessons, many lessons that I've learned during COVID is it's, the neighborhoods are so important, but also knowing how to access the resources and what those resources are. So I look very much forward to being part of the city council, and I think I would love to continue this civic work and engagement within this ward. It's been a real privilege to be able to share this with you all tonight, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to go ahead now and move over to the nominations. Just so that everybody knows, I know I'm certainly appreciative to each and every single one of you for being here tonight, and I know my colleagues would like to share their expressions of appreciation as well. So once we go through the nomination process, I'll be opening up the floor to my colleagues as well to share their thoughts. So with that, Madam Clerk, if we could go ahead and open nominations. I'm just going to unmute you, Madam Clerk.
The floor is now open for nominations.
Okay, I see Counsel Harris. Counsel Harris?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Anthony J. Andronico.
Okay, we have a nomination for Anthony Andronico. Do we have a second? Second by Counsel. Okay, the floor is still open for nominations. Counsel Palmucci?
I'd like to nominate Dana Harkin.
Okay, we have a nomination for Dana Harkin. Do we have a second?
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, second by Counsel DeBona. Any other nominations? Counselor Palmucci?
I nominate Kenneth Augen.
Okay, we have a nomination for Kenneth Augen. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. I'll second it. Nina? I'll second that.
Thank you, Counsel DeBona. I think there might have been a lag. I had a second by Counsel Phelan.
Oh, that's all right.
DeBona, do we have, no worries. Do we have any other nominations? Okay, with that, I'd like to, Counsel Mahoney, and then I see Counsel Palmucci, and then I'll come back to it. Counsel Mahoney?
I'm going to nominate Richard Ash as well.
A nomination for Richard Ash. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Palmucci? Okay, Counsel Palmucci, I was going to go to you next. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Mary Jo Bragnan.
Okay, we have Akman.
Like the second.
Mary Jo Brogna. Second by Counsel.
I'll second it.
And then if I may, on the motion, Madam President, after nomination.
Please, Counsel Palmucci? Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, can we close nominating? All of five candidates have been nominated, so I'm going to go ahead and close out the nominations now, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to discuss the candidacies with each of the candidates over the past couple of days after receiving their letters of interest in our agenda packet on Friday. And wow, what a great group of folks we have. We're very lucky to have them express an interest. And I thought it was important that all of them be put into nomination to recognize that all of them have been and are being considered for this position. And I just wanted to just go through, if I may, some of the strengths that I found in each of the candidates. First, Dana Harkin, an incredible community advocate. I had first met her through her involvement in leadership of the Pennsill Neighborhood Association, in which we actually didn't see eye to eye on a particular issue, but that's okay. More recently, she's helped found the Friends of Faxton Park. She's really, Dana is really the embodiment of a resident advocate, someone who stands up for their neighborhood, working to make Ward Two a better place. So we thank Dana for applying and expressing her willingness to fill the vacancy. Mary Jo Brogna, I think many of us know Mary Jo from other civic activities throughout the city. Mary Jo offers a really valuable and unique perspective in these difficult times. Her experience in the public health realm is really just second to none. She's not only been a healthcare leader, but also a leader in the community, engaged with many civic groups, and she's played a very important leadership role on the Quincy College Board of Governors, for which we can all be thankful and we appreciate her work in helping get the nursing program back up and running at Quincy College. We thank her for her willingness to step up and serve the community in this capacity tonight. Kenneth Augen, I didn't previously know Kenneth, but I'm glad that I do now. I had the opportunity to have a long conversation with him. He's a small business owner in the city with experience in zoning matters, which is always helpful for a ward counselor to know his zoning laws. He prides himself on his communication skills and his problem-solving abilities, which again, very good traits to have in a ward counselor. And again, he's a fitting candidate for the times that we find ourselves, having experience working with the immigrant population, speaking multiple languages, and having spent time studying in Asia. So I thank Kenneth as well for submitting his interest in serving the community as the Ward Two City Councilor. Richard Ash has been involved with many groups in the city in Ward Two, including the City Dems, the Ward Two Civic Association, and Quincy Pride, just to name a few. He's been an outspoken advocate against the Waymouth compressor station and in support of the city's Black Lives Matter organizations. And you can easily see that he's someone who's willing to fight, to step up and to fight for what he believes in. And clearly, he doesn't tire very easily with all of those activities that he's involved in. As he mentioned, he comes from a proud family, tradition of involvement in the city and in the community. And I think you can say unequivocally, he has love for Quincy running through his veins. So we thank Richard. I wanted to thank Richard for putting his name into consideration for the Ward Two seat. And then Anthony Andronico. Anthony currently serves as the vice chair of the school committee, as we all know, a capacity in which I've had the pleasure to work with him cooperatively on a number of issues over the years. He also serves as the chair for, the chair of the school committee's Equity, Diversion, and Inclusion Committee, which is obviously near and dear to my heart. He's also been involved in many Ward Two civic groups over the years. And his current job, working with the state, in the state senate, I believe provides him with experience and exposure to many of the same issues that we face on the city council. So I thank Anthony for expressing his interest and his willingness to step up on behalf of the Ward Two community tonight. And then lastly, I just, again, I wanted to thank all the candidates for their willingness to serve as the Ward Two City Councilor. It's never easy to put yourself out there and to be voted on or to be judged or evaluated. It's just not easy, but Ward Two is lucky to have each and every one of you. The appointment process is really a peculiar one, if you think about it. It's an election where there's eight votes or eight voters, which doesn't really feel right, especially for me. And it especially doesn't feel right because none of us live in Ward Two, right? We're voting on the Ward Two City Councilor and none of us live in Ward Two. But the one, the one and perhaps the only benefit of this appointment process is really the number of quality candidates that we've had. I mean, I was really just so impressed by what Ward Two has to offer in terms of folks willing to step up and serve in this position. You guys are really, really a talented bunch. We have before us five candidates, each who are well-qualified, well-educated, and well-credentialed. Any one of you would be an asset to the city council. And each one of you are currently an asset to the city at large. I have no doubt that any one of you would make Ward Two proud in your representation as a city councilor. And I really believe that. I think we're fortunate to be able to say that. And I wouldn't say it if I didn't think it was true. You know, if there was a bum in there, I probably just wouldn't say it at all, but I don't think there is. I think you're all really, really well-qualified candidates. Unfortunately, I can only vote for one of you. And that's been a difficult decision to make because of the quality of each one of your candidacies. And while I can't give four of you my vote, I do want to give you my reasoning. And I'll be very brief, it's very simple. Tonight, I'm going to support Anthony Andronico to fill the unexpired term of the Ward Two City Councilor. And that's in large part because he stood for election before the voters of Quincy previously. To me, again, talking about the discomfort that I have with, you know, eight of us selecting the Ward Two City Councilor and none of us being from Ward Two, that carries a lot of weight with me, the fact that he has been elected to a position, popularly elected, and he served with distinction on the school committee. I've had the opportunity to work with him on a number of constituent matters that we've both been engaged on Ward Four residents. And in my opinion, that gives him the slight edge in this particular consideration. And that's a slight edge in an otherwise amazing field of candidates. So I felt that I wanted to say something, what I found impressive about each one of the candidates, and then give my reasoning as to what vote I will cast tonight because I feel that that, you know, that's the least I could do to the many qualified candidates we have tonight. So I thank you, Madam President, and I thank each and every one of you who offered your name tonight. And I hope you stay, I hope you stay involved both in Ward Two and in the city. We make Ward Two proud. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel Palmucci. I'm just going to clarify again, so I had said at the beginning of this that we're going to go ahead and move through the nominations and do the call, the roll call, after which I was going to open it up to my colleagues to have the floor to say a few words. But of course, now I want to make sure that I'm being fair in this process. So if folks do want to speak now versus after the nominations, as I have previously stated, I want to open up the floor. So with that, I see Counsel Harris and then Counsel Debona. Counsel Harris?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I want to express, you know, what Counsel Palmucci just said. It's quite clear, stepping up to put your name out there is very, very much a very difficult thing. And what you've done, and to all the candidates, I want to say thank you. And I want to say a thank you to my ward, just because you live in Ward Two. As ward counselors, we work together as well as with the at-large counselors. But we take the calls, we do what has to happen each day when there's a problem. And again, putting your name out there, I just want to commend you, commend you all. And no matter what happens tonight, don't feel bad about it. In fact, when I talk off the cuff, it's awful. I didn't expect this, but Counsel Palmucci always throws a wrinkle in everything. And that's why I'm speaking right now. But I would like to say that, I would like to say that, that I believe that, you know, and I went through a very, very kind of similar situation a few years ago. And not a few, five years ago. Process, which is very difficult. And all I can say is that, that what really stands out is the fact that, with me, was the fact that the people that have already stood out. And that was an argument when I stood in front of this council and many members of this council. And we stood in front and we were shut down. And we went, we had to wind up going to court because folks didn't really realize what was going on. And my point being is that we have the people who put themselves out and who have been in the system, like the person who I am going to endorse is Anthony, of course, as I nominated him, because he was already out there. He's already put himself out there. And I believe that he took the time to call me, as did Mr. Ash. And I appreciate our conversation, it was a little lengthy. And I think that you have a future in Quincy politics. And I'll be leaving, you'll be coming in. But I think Anthony will be around a long time. But all the other candidates have done a great job. And all I could say is that I didn't have the opportunity to answer questions. You didn't have the opportunity to ask me what my concerns about my ward. Because no matter what, as a ward counselor, we still represent the whole city of Quincy. And in Ward Two, where my mother lives, and I heard a lot of talk. I heard a lot of talk and now I'm going to really get on a soapbox, heard a lot of talk. My mom lives at 1,000 Southern Autory, and you folks know it. All the folks that are there, and there's still, there's folks there that we're talking about vaccines and pandemic and all that. But there's more than the pandemic that needs to happen. But vaccines have to take place in these areas to change the needle, turn the needle from danger to good. My mom's been at 1,000 Southern Autory and she'd be furious I'm talking about her. But she's been there since the beginning and it's like being in jail. And for the most part, now she reaches out to me because she wants to be able to get back to life at 95 years old, believe it or not, on her own. And that's Ward Two. And again, Anthony reached out to me, Mr. Ash reached out to me. And that's where, that's where I'm coming from as far as. Nobody reached out to me except for the two folks that did. And so there's where I'm going for endorsing Anthony. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Debona?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Brad Crowell for his service for the last nine years. And these are big shoes to fill for Ward Two. He was definitely a ward counselor, went above and beyond, and he truly cared about the others and the citizens of that ward. There was a commonality of all five of you tonight. All of you are in the business of helping people. So thank you for your resumes, thank you for your letters of intent. Thank you for speaking tonight, getting to know all of you. I know some of you personally. No hot feelings on who we picked tonight. You have to have five votes. And with that, I just want to say thank you for reaching out. I thank the council president for putting on a fair opportunity for all of them. So looking forward to whoever fills this seat to do a good job and make sure that of the wards, this is the most ward that has the most senior citizens. I think we have five buildings throughout Ward Two. So you would be, with the impact of COVID, COVID, you know, it's very important that you reach out to the senior citizens and make sure that they have obviously the public safety around their building. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel. Okay, anybody else wishing to speak before we move forward to the nominations? Counsel Mahoney?
Thank you, Madam President. I first want to also thank all of the candidates. I did have the opportunity to speak with each and every one of you. And all of you bring such incredible talent to a ward seat in the council. And, you know, one of the things that I have to say is nine years ago, when the seat once again opened up, when Dan Ramondi moved out of being the ward counselor, it opened up and it was presented an opportunity for somebody to step in. And it was filled with somebody that was not going to run. And we had a very, you know, a great election for Ward Two, where Brad Crowell ended up succeeding being the council for the last nine years. And the ward got to select who the council person was. So it is unique when the council member steps down and there is a hole to fill. And we have incredible candidates that have come out. And I really do appreciate the fact that Mary Jo Brogna has come out because she also offers something that is desperately needed here in the city of Quincy right now, seeing we've lost our Commissioner Jones and we don't have a replacement for her yet. And I know that a board council does not change that, but it does help direct the dialogue of something that's so important in the city at this current time. And Mary Jo made it very clear that her circumstances are that she wants to do something within the community, within her ward, and to help our city as we move through what's looking like to be turbulent time for the next, at least six to nine months in our city. And we have four incredible candidates, incredible candidates that we have for Ward Two that will give us an opportunity to let the people select that candidate as opposed to eight of us, the members, to do that. So I really, I got to know each and every one of the candidates and each and every one of them brings incredible skills that I hope will be elected in November for the seat. And with that, I will be supporting Mary Jo tonight because I also think she brings something that's also incredibly valuable to our ward council and for the city as a whole when it comes to the council seat for the next 11 months. So I want to let you all know that I'm extremely proud of the fact that you've all come forward and all of the things that you have done. And I've enjoyed talking to each and every one of you. And I know that, you know, I anticipate that I'll be seeing all of you in the election cycle as we go forward. So thank you.
Thank you. And just going to double check on my screens here to see anybody else would like to speak. Okay, so before we move to the roll call, I want to jump in here now too, since we're all taking a moment to sort of express, you know, sort of our caption for the night and our thoughts on this process. And so I do want to reiterate what I had said earlier, that I'm extremely grateful to all of the candidates who took the time to be thoughtful about their involvement in this process as well in putting their names up, putting together the letters, what they submitted, preparing for this evening. And I want to thank all of you for, again, stepping up to take on that role and to move forward in that. I share also Counsel Mahoney's sentiment with us in supporting Mary Jo Brogna. You know, for me, I take this process extremely seriously and I think that we all do. We go into this knowing and understanding the seriousness of the decision that's being made here tonight. But ultimately, that decision is to fill a vacancy for the remainder of this term. And so it's important to me personally to make sure that I'm making the best decision I can because it's a decision that we need to make with this vacancy. And so it's important for me to make sure that I'm filling it with somebody who is not going to potentially run in the next election and for Mary Jo to outright state that, for me, was really informative and really helpful in making this decision with this process. Because again, it's important that she's focused on filling this vacancy. She's important in filling out the rest of Counsel Crowell's term and focused on the work that's directly in front of us. And just again, with her experience in the medical industry for both the executive side as well as in the practicing side with being a nurse, I think that is an incredible value add for the substance decisions that are in front of us, whether it's taking a look at the budget, the impact of the small businesses going to decline, when they can open again, making those kinds of decisions for when schools can open again safely, and what we need to do to make sure that we're opening city services safely. I think that she's a huge value add in those important decisions moving forward. So for those two reasons, in addition to, you know, I personally have gotten to know over the years, because she has been so active in Ward Two, I just think that for what's in front of us, to fill a vacancy for the remainder of this term, that she, to me, is the total package for that. So I'm super excited to support her tonight. And again, thank all of you as well for joining her in this process. So with that, we'll move forward. I just want to reiterate, Madam Clerk, that we do have a nomination and a second for all five candidates. So if you could just clarify the process for the roll call vote, and then if you can call the roll, please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. So I will call the counselor's name, and I please ask that you come back with the candidate you find best to fill the seat of Ward Two. I'll go ahead and start that process now, and I will also read it back to you, because sometimes this Zoom skips, or there are three As, so I wanna be sure that I'm getting the name correct. Okay? Counsel Kane?
Anthony Andronico.
Anthony Andronico. Counsel Devana?
Anthony Andronico.
Anthony Andronico. Counsel Harris?
Anthony Andronico.
Anthony Andronico. Counsel Mahoney?
Joanne Brogna.
Mary Jo Brogna?
That was it. Mary Jo Brogna, I'm so sorry. Mary Jo.
Shaka.
Counsel McCarthy?
Anthony Andronico.
Counsel Palmucci?
Anthony Andronico.
Counsel Phelan? Oh, sorry, Anthony Andronico.
Anthony Andronico.
Anthony Andronico. President Liang?
Mary Jo Brogna.
Mary Jo Brogna. So right now, the vote is Anthony Andronico, six, and Mary Jo Brogna, two.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk, and thank you again to all of my colleagues for participating in this process. Just to reiterate that with this procedure, we needed to make sure that whoever's nominated had a minimum of five votes. And as Anthony Andronico has six, then I would like to declare him the official nominated our next Ward Two City Councilor to fill the vacancy. Congratulations. Can I actually just ask everyone to unmute themselves for a moment? Give all of these candidates a huge round of applause. This process is not one that is taken lightly, and each of them have been so committed throughout. So please, if we could just unmute ourselves and give them a huge round of applause for their work.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you all so much. And with that, I would like to also congratulate Mr. Anthony Andronico. And if you'd like to just say a few words, then I'll go back into some logistics and we'll wrap up. Anthony?
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel President Liang, and thank you again to the city council for the opportunity. I think it's really important to just say thank you to everyone that stepped forward to represent Ward Two. And some of the best qualities of Ward Two are displayed in each candidate. And it's one of the things that I love about this community, is that there's no shortage of people that are willing to step up to help others. And I know that each and every one of them would be, would do a fantastic job over the next year. And I look forward to working with them next year to help them and make sure that we get the job done for the people of Ward Two. And I look forward to working with my future colleagues on the city council to advocate for the needs of people of Ward Two and adhere to a high level of service that they've come.
And people reneged on Nina, no bonus.
Okay, Anthony, thank you so much. So our next city council meeting is scheduled for February 1st, 2021, which is next week. So between now and then, if you can coordinate with Nicole Crispow, the clerk, to get registered and signed in, officially sworn in as the Ward Two Counselor, you'll be ready to go for next week's meeting. So thank you so much. Congratulations, Anthony. And yeah, thank you everyone again so much for your help. And Nicole, you did a phenomenal job. I appreciate it. And I'll see folks next week for our next city council meeting.